Okay. Welcome to this evening's Committee of the Whole. The time is 7:30 and the date is November 21st, 2023. So this evening, we actually have two items on our Committee of the Whole agenda. We have no signatories on the sign-in sheet, so we'll begin with our first item, which is the review of our draft Sustainability Plan and Environmental Committee Work Plan. And for that, we'll turn to Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I think, actually, in this case, Alderman Kohler, who also serves as the Chair of the Environmental Committee, wanted to make a few remarks before we got started.
Certainly. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. So the Sustainability Plan has been under development for a long time, a couple of years. I kind of got involved in this. My background is chemistry, as everybody knows. And so we are very active in the sustainability issue in the chemical community. But my first introduction came with Alderman McHale, who knocked on my door while she was running for Alderman. And she says, "What can I do for you?" And I said, "There's a couple of things." One of them is, "Do we have a sustainability plan for the city?" And she didn't know, but she said there was a sustainability plan. And she kind of introduced me to the Environmental Committee, which at the time, the mayor was chairing. And then I got appointed to that. And I started working on the Sustainability Plan with the mayor, who was on the committee at the time, and the members of the Sustainability Committee were also there. It is really kind of exciting to get to this stage, after a couple of years of working on owning it, having many discussions on it. And it's really about, what do we want as a city to ensure that our city is sustainable for the next generation and the next generation and the next generation? How can we ensure that everything from the energy to transportation to welcoming, being a welcoming community? How can we ensure that this community we have here today, that we're all proud of, can be sustained for generations to come? And that we aren't doing something that's jeopardizing the future of our city? And so I will then now turn it over to Assistant City Administrator Cole to describe what we've been doing and to present the plan for the first time, which we hope will be acceptable to the council as we go into approval of it.
Thank you, Alderman. So again, I'm the Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole. You'll forgive me, my voice is a little raspy this evening, but bear with me. And thankfully, you know, I have a nice, don't have to project too loud, thanks to our council chair renovation. So I'm very happy for that. Happy to have a microphone right here tonight of all nights. So as a brief recap, this is one item, but it's really two. We'll be talking a bit about the draft Sustainability Plan recommended, or to be recommended to the City Council by the Environmental Committee. There's a lot of material here, so please know that in addition to our discussion, we welcome any comments in writing that we'll share with the committee. And we anticipate this will be back before you at the first and only City Council meeting in December. Separately, there's a draft work plan that we'll talk about towards the end of the presentation. That won't necessarily be coming back to you for action. That's just your chance as the council to comment on what the Environmental Committee is looking to do in this next period in view of the Sustainability Plan and some of its other operations. So first up is this draft Sustainability Plan. As Alderman Kohler said quite eloquently, you know, sustainab- but to step back a bit, too, and just talk about framework. Sustainability has a few different definitions. It's a bit amorphous. My personal favorite comes from a UN report back in 1987, which is just, "Sustainable development is that development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs." It's often styled as a three-legged stool, one leg being the environment, one leg being the economy, and one leg being equity, really, social equity. Some folks have suggested that it might be a new organizing principle for government cities, things like that. Still a work in progress. You might also hear about the UN's Sustainable Development Goals. That's something that's starting to increase in interest in the region, and we'll come back to that topic a little bit later. As a bit of, to spell out the timeline that Alderman Kohler referenced, this plan has been, in some ways, a long time in the making. It really goes back, in some ways, to the development of the Greenest Region Compact II Framework, or the GRC II Framework by Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. That was done back in 2016. The city, among many other communities in the region, adopted that framework aspirationally as a resolution in 2017. Fast forward a few years to 2021, when the Environmental Committee, which was previously an ad hoc group, was formally established. From there and into 2022, there was an assessment of existing conditions within the city. And then in 2023, that's when the focus has really shifted towards the Environmental Committee taking on that formal role now charged with by the City Council in drafting this plan. Then that assessment process, excuse me, was pretty extensive. So the GRC II Framework is substantial. It entails over 400 different goals. It's really meant to be like a framework trying to capture at that time all of the many different possible sustainability activities that were going on in the Chicago region. We've slowly have narrowed that down. So the framework here really follows the form of the GRC II. There's 10 overarching categories in the GRC II. Those are the 10 categories in the plan. Each section has a description. Some have a spotlight of particularly unique stories within Rolling Meadows. Then there are the goals. Again, those are dictated by the GRC II Framework. And then there's a set of city strategies that describes how we're going to implement those goals here in Rolling Meadows. A bit of, again, framework on these strategies. We don't have 421 different strategies in the plan. That's been boiled down to less than 100. There's really a set of attained goals, which we're not counting up, but just recognizing that there are many aspects of the GRC II Framework that we've at least accomplished or made substantial progress towards without a plan. There's a lot of those. There's some short-term goals. Any one of these, we think, could reasonably be implemented in about 18 months, start to finish. But there's over 40 of them. So we think in total, that takes about four years to get through, assuming we're just going straight down the road of working through the plan sequentially. I'll mention here, too, that as you look through the plan, there's some ratings of significance and difficulty. Those aren't, those are just kind of internal to the plan, right? So each category has one-third. You know, there might be some disagreement about whether something really is that hard, but we think in view of the plan, something scored low is in that one-third of the easiest goals in the plan, and so on. There are also some long-term goals. These are things that maybe are more aspirational from the GRC II Framework, or they're more difficult to measure, or they're just things that aren't reasonable to implement in view of that kind of four-year-long agenda, right? But they're still there, they're still captured, there's still something that we might make progress towards as we work through the plan. For our purposes here, you may wish to follow along in the packet, especially, you know, as you go through the plan. Or really, there's like that goal matrix at the end that really spells out these bullet points I'll go through. I'm going to move relatively quickly through these goals. As it is, these goals are bullet-pointed, so there's not a whole lot to do to boil it down further. I wish I could come up with a faster way to move through it, but we'll just take kind of a couple of minutes in each goal area. Please interrupt me if there's something you'd like to comment on, or otherwise, we'll keep moving along. So in the first goal of 10, the climate goals, the GRC II Framework lays out these four overarching goals, right? Reducing greenhouse gas, air quality, resiliency to climate change impacts. That's something we talk about more in the region. And then education and outreach. You'll see that last goal repeated again and again throughout this, throughout this plan, throughout the GRC II Framework. In the short term, our strategies are that we'll establish greenhouse gas emission targets that will assess threats from extreme weather events, that will work to reduce the emission of VOCs, such as the city has already done with its coal tar ban from our own operations, and again, that will educate the public. In the longer term, the Rolling Meadows can join the Compact of Mayors, which is an AICLE program, as well as start to improve our communication around air quality forecasts, pollution action days. You might be familiar with these when certain climate conditions cause elevated ozone. In the environmental development section, again, two overarching goals. One is workforce development innovation, and the second is the green economy. The theme here is really just that the economy is changing with sustainability, and how does the city, how do our businesses keep up? In the short term, we can integrate that into our community's brand, our tourism activities. This is something the City Council has talked about this year, and you'll be seeing a recommendation to appoint a firm soon that just recognizes that we can take advantage of that opportunity to work in our sustainability, our branding, our goals. We want to attract retained businesses with that practice promotes sustainability. We want to recognize those businesses. And of course, we want to promote our local goods and services here in Rolling Meadows. Longer term, you know, we're trying, there's, again, more aspirational goals here, but trying to encourage green innovation, advocate for new opportunities in the industry, connect local businesses with education, training, jobs, trying to make that pipeline of skilled workers that are necessary for many of these newer, higher-technology jobs. In energy efficiency, the plan goals talk about, you know, using energy more efficiently, implementing renewable energy in the city, reducing consumption, working towards policy goals, and again, engaging the community in this education and recognition of these practices. In the short term, that looks like pursuing Soul Smart, which is a recognition program for the ease and accessibility of permitting for solar panels in the city. That's potentially procuring additional resources for city, renewable resources, excuse me, for city usage, as well as when we go out for community choice aggregation, which is the city's residential and small business aggregation program. Then again, raising community awareness of these things. In the longer term, we'd be looking at potentially renewable energy systems at city facilities, as well as performance contracting for energy efficiency projects. That's a different contracting forum where the contractor is based on savings captured or realized instead of a fixed price. Land is a big, big goal area in the plan. It's probably where the heart of many sustainable interests are, certainly the heart of the Sustainability, excuse me, the Environmental Committee, before it was made formal by the City Council. In this area, because it's a big category, many goals, we're looking at strategic, sustainable development patterns, preserving natural features in ecosystems, preserving parks, open space, urban forest, sustaining beautiful landscapes that provide ecological value, and again, policy, education, outreach, engagement. In the short term, and these are some big, hard goals. These are community development goals, but, you know, looking really at trying to shape development towards infill development that reduces adverse impacts by consuming more of our available green space, reduces our infrastructure demands. We're looking at using more regional data to shape future tree initiatives that will preserve our urban forest. We're looking at revising our subdivision regulations to promote sustainability, to promote, you know, capturing these, preserving these open spaces, natural features. And then the yellow, the blue highlight indicates cross-referencing, cross-listing. You'll see that in other sections. The yellow highlight is just to tag those things that are in the Environmental Committee's work plan for 2024. So this first example is that the city will partner with the Rolling Meadows Park District to develop the Iceman property as a key asset. That's a small property located on the west side of the city. I think technically in the Palatine Park District, but now D2 owned by the Rolling Meadows Park District. That can potentially be used as an interpretive center or for other purposes. In the longer term, or excuse me, these are still short-term goals. Trying to find partnerships to use high-value wood products when we do have to remove trees. Adopting the mayor's monarch pledge, which is, again, sort of an aspirational statement. You can do that by resolution. And again, raising community awareness of these important topics. Longer term, we want to look at our ability to incorporate native sustainable landscaping into our municipal projects, so rights of way, city property, and then implementing low-impact management for our landscapes. So for example, low pesticide use management techniques. In the leadership category, again, this is thinking of many communities in Chicago and trying to encourage encouraging, if you would. Trying, the GRC II envisions enlisting support at all levels of government, advocating for policies, working collaboratively. In Rolling Meadows, that means we'll evaluate new recognition programs, and potentially one of those programs being Tree City USA. We have, we think we have the level of activity necessary to get these growth awards, which is kind of the extra gold star. But, you know, it just takes some additional administrative work to get the gold star. Longer term, of course, we made a plan. We'll implement it. We'll keep working with our partners on, you know, policies for the region. This blue item here relates to a couple of areas, but just says that as we're reevaluating our regional transit service, we'll advocate for more of that service in Rolling Meadows. We'll advocate for the funding, the governance changes necessary to do that. And of course, we'll keep advocating for state and federal policies that make this possible. Just one more. Mobility, this is transit, transportation, bicycle and pedestrians. Want to make an area hospitable for them, a transit system hospitable for them. Maintain diversity, safety, and efficiency in our transportation network. Steward our resources that are invested in that network. And again, policy, shared uses of mobility when it comes to different last-mile transit choices especially. And once again, education, outreach, education, outreach. Another one on the sustainability committees, oh my gosh, the environmental committees. I keep crossing them. Work plan is electric vehicle charging infrastructure. There's a lot of planning taking place for this at the federal level, at the state level. And there's probably some money to be had if we can move quickly into the space at the local level. I think, again, because so much of it is happening at higher levels of government, that may be a hard competition, but it's a good time to get into the business. Parking requirements. A big part of our urban forum is how much land we spend on parking. And so thinking about if our requirements need to be as high as they are, or if they can be more creative, can help change the resources we use in a lot of ways. Similarly, making sure our building, our zoning codes, support deploying this electric vehicle infrastructure, make it easy to put in chargers, convert parking spaces to charger use, that's important. Subdivision regulations, again. And then simple stuff, discouraging idling, educating the public again. In the long term, we want to continue to implement our bicycle and pedestrian plans and our complete streets policy, one of the best in the country. We want to look at safe routes to school planning to prioritize those gaps nearest to our elementary and middle schools. Transit, again. Landscaping in our rights of ways, again. And the last one, the fun, aspirational one. I understand at one time, the city did an open streets or community bike ride event. That's something that many communities in Chicago do, and perhaps can come back. Municipal operations. Like to lead by example, integrate sustainability, operate a clean fleet, and collect data that justifies everything we're doing. So we're looking at, again, vehicle charging infrastructure, implementing smart technology. I know a favorite of former Mayor Gallows. Expand the availability of recycling at special events. There's no reason we can't have temporary recycling containers, temporary composting containers right next to our temporary trash containers. And then looking longer term at data collection, dashboarding, environmental purchasing, and also potentially trying to take some of these cost savings we're capturing from sustainability initiatives and setting them aside to continue to reinvest in accelerating how we implement these. Over halfway there, stay with me. Sustainable communities. This is a lot of our social equity and cultural features are tucked in here. When we talk about arts, culture, local food, social justice, some language items come in here. And then, again, kind of a bit of a potpourri of, you know, sustainable identity and making sure that other policies, honestly, that don't have a home elsewhere, advance these sustainability goals. In Rolling Meadows, that means we'll keep expanding access to government services and language other than English. We'll keep working towards programs and policies welcoming to people of all ages, especially who are older. We'll keep looking at community arts and cultural events and how to sponsor those, especially those that reflect the diversity of culture in our community. In the longer term, we'll keep looking at how to remove barriers, how to make it easier for folks to participate in civic affairs such as this. Keep looking at ways to recognize private developments that achieve sustainability goals and work to partner with our schools on integrating sustainability into the curriculum. Waste and recycling, as you can imagine. Reduce, reuse, recycle, that's three of the goals. And then educate everyone to do just the same thing. At the top, an important topic for the Environmental Committee, I'm going to think about it every time I say it now, is being able to mitigate pollution from disposable bags. Understand that there's been some outreach from students to the city instead of the other way around on this topic, and that members of the committee have been looking at different policy choices, different outreach choices, and how to address that. That shows up in the group's work plan. And also, the next topic on our agenda tonight, this study of commercial recycling participation and how we can improve recycling use by our business community. We'll also look at expanding recycling in the public realm. Again, if there's a trash can there, why can't there be a recycling can? We'll keep educating the public. We'll try to find some resources for these specialty waste streams like clothing, shoes, textiles. And again, special events, the same as street furniture. Longer term, we'll set some harder targets. We'll start to measure those for ourselves and for the community. And we'll also look at potentially curbside food scrap composting, or maybe other ways to divert food waste out of landfills. That can be, that can improve landfill capacity, and that can also be turned into mulch and reduce methane emissions. Believe this is the last category, water and stormwater. So two very different topics, really. One is, you know, our drinking water, potable water. We'll conserve it, we'll make sure it's high-quality, we'll manage it sustainably, knowing it's a big capital asset. And then on the stormwater side, we'll continue to manage these climate effects, these storms, try to make sure that we're planning for the increased demands that are being put on this system. And again, we'll teach everyone about it. In the short term, that means participating in the community rating system, which is a FEMA project, to reduce our flood risks, our flood insurance costs, trying to disincent or disconnect some easy downspouts and other connections to our storm sewers. By making them flow over land, we can increase the capacity of that storm sewer. Become an EPA WaterSense partner. Plumbing in the city is already required to use these WaterSense fixtures for being on Lake Michigan water. So we can just sign the partnership and be done, check the box. And again, educate the community. And then longer term, again, this idea of native and sustainable landscaping, which especially can be applied to our stormwater management techniques. So the plan at the very end talks about who implements it, and there's a whole list of folks. That includes city staff, the city council, the city's many committees, businesses, schools, residents, and everyone in this room. So it's really, I do want to emphasize, this is a collaborative effort. This is a city-wide effort. This doesn't just start and end in this building, but it's really casting forward a vision over the next four years that we hope the community will rally behind and be our partners in implementing. Any questions before I move on? Didn't have one interruption, so I'm hoping that's okay.
I think we're just getting thumbs up around the table. So if you'd like then Assistant City Manager to go into the work plan for the Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee, I'll speed ahead.
Certainly. We've talked about over half of these topics already. The first four are from the plan we just talked about. Disposable bags, commercial recycling, the Iceman property, and electric vehicle charging. The last two don't have a direct home in the plan, but number five is just continuing to monitor the potential effects of the redevelopment of Arlington International Racecourse. And number six is continuing to pursue the committee's program of special events, including the famous duck race. So we are looking, again, on this particular one, I think we're looking for your support, knowing that there won't be another chance to talk about this for a little while.
City Council, any comments regarding the priorities for the committee for the next 12 months or so? Alderman Kohler.
I just want to comment that this plan came together slowly, but it came together thoughtfully, where the committee actually got a lot of input from a broad base. I was most excited to get the input from the younger generation. I'm talking to school kids, who actually went out and collected data for us on some of it. Is, the Willow Bend students went out and actually inventoried the litter in our community. And that's where they came up with, "We want to get rid of these plastic bags." Those are kind of exciting, to see the younger generation helping us, telling us what they're looking for. So I would look forward to them actually coming to council meetings as we get into this discussion. It's an ambitious plan, but I think it's, we could be leaders in our community if we aggressively adopt something like this. It's a comment, wasn't a question, Mayor.
And comments are welcome as well. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Alderman.
I know there's future to come on this, and just the first time we're looking at it. Like, obviously, number one, is that the whole where it would be like a, because I know it's had mixed acceptance in other municipalities that have done it. That's like, in the city, they charge you seven cents if you use a plastic bag. That's the thought for the top one? Because I'm probably put on the Economic Development Committee hat that I sit on as well. I know there's a whole lot more discussion to go on, but that's, is that what really bullet point number one means? Is we either outlaw them altogether, or there's a 10-cent service fee?
Yeah, on that, I'd actually defer to, this is a, so the committee has talked about this at extra meetings, that they very graciously did not ask me to attend as staff. So I would defer to Alderman Kohler and Mayor Sonalika for those conversations.
Yeah, and I can start off, you know, with that as well. So again, as Alderman Kohler had mentioned, so we had actually second graders from Willow Bend Elementary School that provided letters and data and follow-up regarding plastic bags specifically, which then launched research into a regional review of the different policies that we have in the region. So what has been successful, what has been less successful? So, you know, questions like a fee for a bag versus an outright ban versus an incentive for bringing your own, and, you know, using the economics of people's behavior, and how long did it take to adopt a specific type of behavior? And those were the extra meetings we were for, were to determine, okay, well, what's feasible? And I think, and Alderman Kohler, I'm sure, can add to this as well, is making sure that, okay, well, we want to make sure that there's a policy that's not draconian and that works with people's lives, right? So if we ban, for example, garbage liners as a municipality, what, how enforceable is that? What's the impact, and what's the replacement? So when we say we had extra meetings, it was because the individuals that comprised this committee were very thoughtful in how they wanted to approach that. And so as far as like, what would the policy be before the council? That's what the committee would continue to look into for the year, so.
That's helpful.
Alderman Kohler, any additional?
Yeah, we don't have an answer to that yet.
Sure.
But I know the committee spent a lot of time, I'm talking several meetings that went for many hours. And in between those meetings, they collected information of two types. One is data, as to what's, data on not only what is out there, so we can give you the state of Illinois and the municipal data, what kind of trash is out there, and what kind of waste is out there. They also have data on what is, what works and what doesn't work. And not, it doesn't, it's not as simple as getting rid of plastic bags and thinking everybody's going to go to paper bags, because paper bags actually are environmentally less friendly, believe it or not, than the, because they use trees to make them. So when you look at the full life cycle of the solutions, it may not be the best solution. We did review other city municipalities, and we'll go through that again. The city of Chicago had a ban, that didn't work. California has several bans, those didn't always work. So there's a lot to be done on that. But the question before the committee is, what is the right solution to ensure that our answer is both helping the environment and not hurting it? To ban it is not going to work, because it's going to make people go to alternatives that aren't as friendly as plastic. So we looked at all those things, and we will continue to look at those options as we go forward. And we also are very cognizant of looking and talking to our- And we also are very cognizant of looking and talking to our businesses to say, what's going to work for you?
Well, that's helpful.
And that was, you know, in addition to that approach as well, right? So that's one, so we just went through the entire plan of the 420 different items, some of which the city's already doing. So this is, you know, when you hear, oh, when Alderman Kohler says, the committee spent hours doing this. You know, I want to stress that this is in addition to all the other business. So a lot of, a lot of passion for even just one line within, within the plan itself.
That's great. More to come, that's interesting, that'll be good, yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions regarding the work plan for this group? Okay.
All right. So with that said,
Please, yes.
Yes, so the, the second item on the, the committee, the whole agenda tonight is solid waste hauler licensing. This is, I think, a much more straightforward topic. Right now, as a bit of a primer, back, I believe, in the 90s, the city joined with SWANQ, the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County, to create a system of transfer stations. So one, the la, the only transfer station operated by SWANQ is located in Glenview. The Rolling Meadows transfer station, as I understand, at one point was to be part of that system. And when that wasn't necessary, was given to the city and is now leased to private operators. As part of the financing arrangements for that transfer station, the city is contractually obligated to send its waste to that transfer station. Really into the system, which is, is just that transfer station. So that works itself out in a few different ways. In, in the case of single-family residential, we collect that waste as the city. We take it to our own Rolling Meadows transfer station, which is operated by LRS. LRS takes that and disposes of it into their system of, of landfills and who they broker with. But to fulfill our requirements, they take an offsetting tonnage of waste to the Glenview transfer station from elsewhere in the metro. That's, today, that's mostly from their contracts and displays. In the case of multifamily residential, that is a system of private contractors. So each complex negotiates with a contractor. Those contractors are still required to deliver an equivalent amount of tonnage to Glenview. So the, the agreed upon metric is just one ton per dwelling unit per year, makes its way to Glenview and into the SWANQ system. Finally, on the commercial side, private contractors haul from any location to any location, their waste is excluded from this system. Today, these haulers, scavengers is the, the old school term, if you would, just pay a licensing fee of $100 per vehicle per year. We think that's relatively low in the metro. We think that's low compared to the costs that those activities impose, which we'll talk about. What we're looking at doing is, is a few fold. We're looking at increasing that fee to $1,000 per year, plus $10 per account per six months, or again, $20 per account per year. And part of the rationale of doing it by account is to make sure that we're collecting data on the number and the type and the location of the accounts that are being serviced by each of these haulers. And more particularly, which ones are receiving recycling service from the hauler. Under state law, they have to offer recycle service to everyone. Doesn't mean it's on advantageous terms, doesn't mean businesses want to take advantage of it. Here's the big reason why we're, we talk a lot about these licensing fees and about potentially a commercial franchise, which again, we'll, we'll come to. A lot of times, so when it comes to roads, right? The biggest determinant of road wear is weight on the road, right? But it's not a linear function, right? So if I have a 2,000 pound car and a 10,000 pound truck, the, the, the damage caused by the truck is not five times that damage caused by the car. It's roughly, it's exponential, it's roughly to the fourth power, right? So in this case, the effective road wear of one residential trash truck going down the road is equivalent to, if you can see it here on the screen, 1,279 cars going down the same road. Which is very, very painful for our roads and is a big determinant of where, especially on our residential streets, which, you know, are not built to the same standard of streets in commercial districts. This chart at the top left shows you these different types of vehicles and their equivalent load, or equivalent damage. And then the bottom right shows you, that's just a graphing calculator going up to the fourth power. Sure.
And that's per, that's not like annual or anything like that, that's per trip?
That's just a ratio.
So there's a trash hauler going down Kirchhoff right now, that's the equivalent of 1,300 cars?
According to that study, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's not like annual or anything like that.
Well, it's true for one trip, it's true for annual, it's whatever, it's a ratio. Yeah, so that's one study, you can find different studies that float the number around. This is one that breaks out trash trucks instead of making you do the, the math. But fourth power, it's, it's not a friendly equation for us. Even, even this fee doesn't really fully offset that damage, but it starts to expose the, the full cost of a bunch of different trucks driving around the city in, instead of one coordinated truck system. This, this brings us to the second point, the second opportunity that this opens up. So the fee change stands on its own, but this fee change also starts a statutory process to consider establishing a, a commercial franchise, an exclusive commercial, a commercial franchise. So the city goes out to RFP, it selects one hauler that would service all of the commercial accounts in the city. You could do that, I believe, today for multifamily if you wanted to, that's, that's not a big universe. Potentially, you'd be talking about commercially and multifamily if you went down this road. The first reason to do that is to achieve cost savings, right? Some of that, the city can take as a fee, you don't have to do that. You can just choose to take your market power and to give it back to the businesses. There's both an economy of scale argument there, as well as the fact that these, this market is just not that transparent. It's not that logically priced. There's a lot of, you know, price gouging is a bit too harsh, but there's, there's not open competition for these rates. And this is a way to create open and very leveraged competition on behalf of our business community. Also, potentially in the case of the city, we also operate another big asset that's attractive to haulers, which is our transfer station, and potentially bundling those together, if it makes sense, could help leverage, you know, our profits, our return from that investment, or help the business community or whatever balance is struck between those two. If we do this, we can improve the utilization of recycling. Almost all of these franchise agreements provide for free recycling. So essentially, the costs of providing that recycling service are rolled into the waste costs. So you're kind of missing out if you don't take the recycling. And then finally, as we talked about, we get to reduce emissions, we get to reduce road wear by reducing the number of times these vehicles are crisscrossing the city. There is unfortunately a statutory process for doing this, which is long and cumbersome. You can't just start award this today. Statute requires that for a period of three years, we need to collect every six months, thus the fee interval, this account data from haulers. And each time we collect it, we need to calculate the number of accounts each hauler has and the number of accounts that receive recycling service. If they're over 50%, if over half of the accounts have recycling, we can't go on to award a commercial franchise. That hasn't happened yet, that I'm aware of in Illinois. There's a number of communities that have done this. You would think that it would be in the interest of these haulers to incent recycling, to avoid losing their business, but that's, again, not how it's played out. After that three-year period, you can go through a statutory RFP process, takes a better part of a year. And then a year and a quarter after that RFP is awarded, you can actually kick in that exclusivity period. So this is potentially the start of a five-year road to realizing success. Doesn't mean you have to go through with it at the end, even if it's, you know, less than 50%. You know, the city council gets a choice if and when that time comes. But the communities that do it have seen pretty positive benefits, and this puts us in a position to realize those. That's, that turns out to be a good course of action. I'll mention, of course, that, you know, when we get closer to doing this, if, again, this is a route the city council wants to take, there's a pretty well-established path of surveying existing accounts, surveying existing costs, and a pattern to make sure that we're capturing savings for the business community, as well as the savings we know we'd capture from, from emissions and from road wear and so on. So happy to answer any, the next step for this, I should say, is that this will be on your next city council agenda for first reading, and then your city council agenda in December to do second reading and adopt. Our goal is to have this in place for the 2024 licensing cycle. But happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Kohler and then Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Can we go back to the cost where you're changing the E slide?
Sure.
Right there, that one there. Haulers pay $1,000 per year, is that per vehicle?
That's just for the privilege of hauling, regardless of the number of vehicles.
Okay, so that is their fee just to participate in this. And then do we keep the 100 per vehicle?
That would be struck. So you would just be going to, let's say, Grude is in town, they're just paying 1,000 for however many trucks come in and out, and then $10 per account.
Okay, so that makes it easier to manage, probably?
Yeah, so we'll get the account list, and then we'll count up the rows, and we'll compare that to the number of dollars being remitted to us. I should mention here too, I don't think I mentioned this, this is not a big revenue impact. Today, we're getting about $4,000, excuse me, $2,100 from this system. This is probably about plus $8,000. So it's not, again, a massive change to the city's budget. Again, helps to more effectively approximate those costs, and we'll give you a comparison of other communities when this comes forward.
So the, so the advantage for getting more money for the streets that they're damaging along the way really isn't going to come from this fee, right?
It does not come close to approximating that damage.
Okay, my next question, can I keep going? My next question, if you establish a commercial franchise, is that the city that establishes that? Or is it, who establishes that franchise and who manages that contract for a citywide franchise?
Sure, so the city would do the RFP process and would enter into what's called a primary contract. And then it's on each business to get their own account under that contract and to make their own payments. So the city isn't financially responsible, but the, the, the terms we reach are essentially the terms that they would be able to take advantage of or have to follow, depending on if you're an optimist or a pessimist.
So kind of like we do with electric fees, where everybody's got their own bill from Commonwealth Edison or whatever, or, but the city has one franchise for that electric service, is that, am I getting that right?
That, that's a good comparison. What I would add is that by statute, on the electric side, you have the ability to opt out. On the commercial franchise side, you would not. There's usually an exemption process that the city council or the city manager can use in very limited circumstances. But virtually all accounts need to be bundled into that franchise.
Last question is on the slide about the 50%, less than 50% recycling option. Towards the end, right there, that one. Last six months must show less than 50% recycling opt-in. If I understand that correctly, saying that when you survey the commercial businesses, we have to show that less than 50% are actually using some kind of recycling program, is that correct?
Yes, so less, 50% or less, or maybe less than 50%, either word, have to not be receiving recycling service. So it's not based on tonnage or anything, it's who actually has a recycling container.
Okay, so on that number, less than 50%, first of all, I don't understand the logic behind this requiring that, you're saying these are states?
As, as I understand the history, and I, I defer to anyone that thinks they have a better grasp on it, Cook County municipalities did a spree of these in the early 2000s. This was a product of Springfield after lobbying from the waste haulers.
Ah, okay, so there's no real logic to it?
I couldn't comment on that.
Okay, yeah, it did, did make sense to me that if there was less than 50% doing recycling, that we couldn't do anything. But then the second question is, do we have a sense, is there really that less, that few of our commercial businesses here that are actually doing recycling, do we think that's true?
Part of this is unknown, or known unknowns, so we just don't receive any account data to, to know that. I mean, anecdotally, to the extent that I drive around and survey businesses, I, I keep my eyes open and I see very few recycling containers. But we'll have better numbers if we start the study process.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Great, thank you. And this is probably just from my own understanding, so I'm in support of this. It's not, it isn't exclusionary, exclusionary agreement where if we go through this five-year process, we select vendor X? Because I know in here, on the previous slide, it said each hauler will pay $1,000. So there still could be three hauling companies? It would just de, I'm trying to think, like, start, from start to finish, would this be a proprietary agreement between the city and one hauling entity? So it's just their trucks coming through? Or there would still be three, we're ultimately trying to get to one, I guess is what I'm asking. It'd be one hauling company doing business in the city?
Ultimately, so today, you still have to allow all these haulers in, and they, they each pay these fees.
Right.
Going through this process gets you in a position to award it to one hauler.
And from your experience on this, because I'm assuming that you've got experience on this, is, is any negative feedback that you ever heard is that entity X has been using ABC vendor for 22 years, and now you're forcing me to go to a different vendor? Is there any backlash?
Sure, so I went through this process up in Lake Bluff. I think we're the first municipality in Lake County to do it. As far as I know, we had the lowest franchise rates in the state, which I'm very proud of. I heard a couple pieces of negative feedback. I mean, one was really just the way the incumbent haulers handled it. I think Waste Management dumped all their accounts on no notice in the span of a couple days and said blame the village. Can't do anything about that. They're pretty happy with the rates, so that's fine. The second one, I mean, there's always winners and losers when you go to a single rate tier. And some folks have very effectively negotiated their contracts. And upside, they don't have to negotiate anymore, but downside, they're, they might lose that leverage. We had only one case like that in Lake Bluff, it was a very specialized haul situation. There, there, there were a vehicle dealer doing a lot of auto parts. So their, their hauling was based on tonnage instead of by volume. And the ske, the fee schedule for these is usually based by volume, excuse me, by like the volume of the container, right? So if you get a two cubic yard dumpster, you pay X. So they lost, they, they lost substantially. But most, in that experience, most people won, even before you get to, you know, however many person years are saved arguing and negotiating, so.
Good, thank you.
So it seems to me, if we go to, if, if we do go through this process, and we do eventually get an exclusive, not exclusive, but one company servicing the city, wouldn't that also help both the traffic of haulers in the city as well as the maintenance of our roads? Because you got one as opposed to six different vendors constantly working through a city, even though, so they got to still drive through the city even if they got one or two customers here, right? So that should help us on our road maintenance too, right?
That's the theory.
I like theory.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Boucher, question.
Um, so over in Ward 5, we have a little bit of an issue of multi-unit garbage not always being picked up cleanly, so then it falls into the neighborhood around it. Is there a way if we honor this, that we hold them accountability, accountable for how cleanly they pick up, back to sustainability? There's days that our yards are full of trash on trash day, because it's just dumped and other companies are better. Is there a way to hold them accountable? Or if we bring somebody in and they're just like, it's a mess, are we stuck with it's a mess? That may sound silly, it may not be how garbage works. But I noticed there's definitely a difference between one company that comes in and another company that comes in. Like how cleanliness, how cleanly they take the garbage away. Does that make sense?
Sure, so I, I'd respond to that today, and then I'd respond to that under a franchise agreement. I guess three responses, a lot of responses. So today, you know, I mean, there are tools the city can put in place to more effectively police that. I mean, we don't have to put up with folks that are just dumping trash everywhere. You know, we have to prove who's doing it to pursue them. We'd want to review the code to make sure that we've got the tools to deal with that, but that's not something Rolling Meadows has to put up with. So that is kind of independent from these other questions. Question and a half, or sorry, I guess the, the, the second response would be, under a franchise right, in addition to having recourse from the city code, you've got recourse under contract. Most of these agreements have pretty robust recourse, saying that you might disagree, but, you know, for the first umpteen times, you're going to go back and you're going to fix it. And if not, we're going to start charging you liquidated damages 100, 200, 300 by the pop, and we'll see who comes out ahead. There's always an enforcement question there, there's always how hard do you push it? But gives you even more tools in the toolbox. You know, the third one I'd say too is, I don't think it would make sense here. I mean, an RFP is an involved process, but, you know, the city could do an exclusive franchise for multifamily today if that was a particular pain point. I mean, there's enough multifamily in the city to probably have the economy of scale to do that. I, I just think, you know, without commercial involvement in it too, that it's, it's pushing the risk reward. But if you were having a lot of trouble, you could, you could look at that.
It's not anything you do differently, I was just making sure we could hold them accountable if it becomes an issue.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Alderman Boucher? Good, thank you. Any other questions or comments for city staff at the moment? Then we'll look forward to the draft ordinance coming forward before the city council then in November. With that, we're done with our items on the agenda this evening, so I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned at 8:19 PM.